Okay, you're good.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Commission for Cottonwood Heights City for this Wednesday evening, April 7th, 2021. This is our business meeting and first we'll start with our anchor location. This is a determination of the Planning Commission Chair concerning an anchor location pursuant to Utah Code annotated 52-4-2074. The undersigned chair of the Cottonwood Heights Planning Commission hereby determines that conducting any meetings of the Planning Commission within 30 days after this date at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. It is well recognized that a global pandemic currently exists related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, which has the potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting a meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. So here we are in our Zoom format. Just a reminder that we still have public participation and those of you that have joined us, hopefully you're aware of how to do that. Basically, when we get, when we open public comment, we will let you know that and then you will be invited into to speak. We still have a three-minute speaking limit for people. So be concise in your comments and we're happy to hear from you. And then just as a rule of order, we'll go through our business agenda items. And we typically, what we do is introduce the item. We have the city staff present the application and then we will open for public comment and potentially not in all cases, some have already had that that opportunity, but will then we go to discussion amongst the planning commissioners and potentially take action on the item from the agenda. So that's our, how we, how we do, how we do this. So bear with us if you have any questions. Please let us know. You can raise your hand. You could type it in and we can get that answered for you. So on our agenda this evening, well, first, do we have any conflicts of interest to disclose from the planning commissioners? Seeing none, we'll move on. Our first item of business is the general public comment period. This is a public comment period for any items that are not on our agenda. If it's something that is on our agenda, we'll do that at the appropriate time when we bring up that that agenda item. Except for potentially the first one, which has already had, this is a continuation of a project that came up in January. And so we have had an open public comment period on that one, and that is now closed. So that's the only one that would have an exception. So with that, we'll go ahead and open up the general public comment if we have any here tonight.
No hands raised yet. I'll give it a few seconds here. I don't think we have any tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mike. And we'll go ahead and close the general public comment period for tonight. As always, if you have something you want to address with Cottonwood Heights or with the Planning Commission, you can send those in to our planners and they are happy to share with us and or answer your questions if they can. We'll move on to 3.0 our business items. First business item on our agenda tonight is 3.1. That's Project CUP-20-016. This is a review and possible action on a request from Thurman Dresden on behalf of Joe Joe, Josie, how about if I do that? For conditional use approval of a bed and breakfast at 6632 South Highland Drive in the residential office zone. This is a continuation, as I mentioned, from January 6th Planning Commission meeting. So this is the one that has the closed public hearing at this moment. And we'll go ahead and turn it over to staff to present the application and anything that's changed since January.
Thank you. I will go ahead and share just a brief presentation to to go through the updates on this project. So as was mentioned, this this project CUP 20016 is request for conditional use approval for a bed and breakfast at 6632 South Highland Drive in the residential office zone. Staff is recommending approval with a condition. A recommended added conditions. We'll get to that toward the end of the presentation. Looking first at our city code and and the way that that addresses bed and breakfasts. These type of bed and breakfast establishments are allowed in the residential office zone as conditional uses. City code defines bed and breakfast as a dwelling occupied as a permanent residence by an owner or renter, which serves breakfast and provides or offers sleeping accommodations. So if we look at the the interaction between that definition and and the application before the commission tonight, a few relevant items, the applicant has confirmed that a permanent resident will reside in the basement of the home and will sign a yearly contract for that lease. And as you'll see later on, staff has included a recommendation for an added condition of approval that the applicant confirm this occupancy by a permanent resident each year upon annual business license renewal. The applicant has also confirmed that the permanent resident will serve breakfast for the guests. And the the project floor plan indicates sufficient bedroom areas for permanent resident and also bed and breakfast guests. Just going through a few of the frequently asked questions on these type of applications. What is the difference between a short-term rental and a bed and breakfast? The main difference here is that a short-term rental does not require onsite management, but a bed and breakfast does. So this requires a permanent resident, as we've discussed, to to live at the property and and sort of oversee that establishment. And again, staff has recommended a condition of approval that the applicant provide evidence of this permanent resident each year. The second question is, will there be any changes to the building footprint or a new building constructed? At this time, there's, there's no proposal for a new structure or changes to the footprint or the the site. The change of use from a purely single-family home to a bed and breakfast requires several code upgrades, specifically building code upgrades that don't affect the building's size or height, but will need to be permitted and reviewed when the time comes. If if the law applies. To update the commission as well as any members of the public listening, during the January 6th Planning Commission meeting, the commission identified a few concerns with this project. The first concern related to the the presence of shipping containers on on the property, which which doesn't meet city ordinance. These illegal shipping containers have been removed from the driveway and that's been confirmed with code enforcement. The second concern related to the use of the property as a short-term rental. The applicant has stated that the property is is used as a long-term lease, so 30 or more days, but not as a short-term rental and staff has coordinated with code enforcement to to verify that there are no open cases for short-term rentals at this property. And then finally, concerns over whether Health Department review and approval was required for this this type of project. Staff has confirmed that this approval is only required for bed and breakfasts where breakfast is being prepared on site. If the breakfast is constituting of prepackaged items, which is what is proposed with this project, Health Department approval is not required. So here we have again the staff recommendation. Staff does find this application to be code compliant as outlined in the staff report and does recommend adding the condition that upon annual renewal of business license, the applicant must demonstrate occupancy within the structure by a permanent resident. And then we have some model motions. So if there are any questions from the commission, I'm happy to to try to answer those.
Sam, I have one and and I didn't bring it up earlier. I just just remembered this. I I went back and I was looking through Salt Lake County's codes and and what they require bed and breakfast. One of theirs was related not to the kitchen but to the lodging. And they have in their code review, they have an option to to visit the site unannounced at any time during the year to ensure that the lodging is is being handled in the way that they expect for a bed and breakfast, which included, you know, a lot of cleaning items and having toiletries available, that kind of thing. Is that something that would apply on top of our code?
That's not something that's specifically stated in the bed and breakfast code or that I'm aware of elsewhere. I know that we coordinate with our code enforcement department typically to review upon complaint. I don't know if Shane or Mike, you want to add anything there? I'm not aware of that option in our code.
My my recollection is that we have an administrative search right in the code somewhere. I haven't looked at it for a long time. But I I think that we have that.
Samantha, can you go back a page? There's something I missed last time and it was about the short term. Now, being a bed and breakfast, isn't that a two or three night thing where it says the applicant has stated the property is used as long-term lease?
Yeah, the the relationship between those two things is a little bit complicated. So let me go back actually a few more slides just to illustrate this. The difference between a short-term rental and a bed and breakfast is really that although bed and breakfasts are also short-term, you know, I don't think many bed and breakfast guests would be staying for 30-plus days. The bed and breakfast has to have a permanent resident and that's where that long-term lease component comes in of having a long-term lease that confirms a permanent occupant is living there. And and that's the difference mainly between the short-term rentals, which are no onsite management required and bed and breakfasts, which which do.
So it's for the the permanent person, not the people stay?
Yes, correct. I apologize. I can see that would be a little bit unclear, but yes, that that long-term lease relates to the the permanent occupant.
I think also that was in response to some of the comments claiming the property was already being used as a short-term rental. The applicant said it's not. And then, you know, the Health Department didn't have any open cases there either.
That's correct. Yes, it was also intended to to illustrate that the applicant has stated they've been using it for a long-term lease, which is permitted by city code, but not for a short-term rental, which is not permitted.
Commissioners, any other questions of staff? We've already had this owner present this project, so I don't want to overburden them, but if they're here and available, they have anything to update us on, that would be welcome at this time.
Yeah, thanks, guys. No update. I appreciate you guys working with me and allowing me the opportunity to get everything fixed and ready to rock and roll. But at this time, no, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, discussion. And I think just just and and maybe this is really Commissioner Anderson, for your benefit, you you weren't here in January. A lot of our concern on this one was you see some of the things that that have been remedied. There were specific concerns to the site. The other is that this a concern by the commissioners that that this is our second bed and breakfast we've seen within about a year, I think. And, you know, we're concerned that people are using these as a way around our short-term rental codes. And so we want to ensure that we're, you know, protecting the neighborhoods from a use that's not allowed in in an area. So so that that gives you a little bit of background on the discussion that came up in January regarding this one and some of the some of the technicalities we wanted to address.
Thank you.
And it seems like we're we're getting to those. And then, as we talked about in our work meeting, you know, this being particularly on a corner that enters into a neighborhood off of a very commercial area, which is why it's the residential office zone, because it it is an interface between both the residential and and a commercial area in Cottonwood Heights. But there's a concern on the residents' part that they're being encroached upon. So this discussion about the parking and maybe adding a condition that the signage onsite for the bed and breakfast guests makes it clear that the parking is available in the driveway on the site. I think I think that one might go a long way to help alleviate any issues with clogging up that entry to the neighborhood with cars. They obviously still can if they need to park on the street, but making it clear that it's a preference that their guests park onsite, I think, would be something we could do to alleviate that situation for the neighborhood. And then, you know, as Sam mentioned, the business license and the review. And thank you, Shane, for clarifying. The city has the option to to go in, you know, make sure more than just annually that there is not just an onsite resident, but this resident is taking on management of a of a bed and breakfast facility. I'm just simplified by having prepackaged food, but it's still, it's a job. If there's no discussion, commissioners, I would entertain a motion.
My guess, I'll do the motion. I move that we approve Project CUP-20-016 with recommended conditions that upon annual review of business license, the applicant must demonstrate occupancy within the structure by permanent residents.
Do you want to add any conditions to that, Commissioner Rhodes?
Well, I was trying to remember what they were and I was hoping other people would chime in.
I think I can add on this one. The one one was having signage onsite that parking is in the driveway for guests. Do you want to accept that additional condition? Okay, so we have a motion with conditions. Do we have a second?
One second.
Who was that?
Commissioner Chapel.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and unless there's any discussion to the motion or the second. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and take our votes. Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Chapel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilde.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Mills.
Yes.
Commissioner Coates, yes. It's unanimous. Good luck with your bed and breakfast. We hope it's a nice addition to Cottonwood Heights. Thank you. Okay, our next item of business, 3.2, is Project SUB-21-001. This is a public hearing to receive comments and take possible action on a request from Tamara Ellsbury and Darren T. for a subdivision amendment for proposed changes to Lot 76 of the existing Stephenson Heights subdivision.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yep, I'll go ahead and share again and we'll switch over to this next presentation. So a bit of a project overview to reiterate what's already been stated. This project SUB-21001 is a request for subdivision amendment to Lot 76 of the Stephenson Heights subdivision. And staff is recommending approval of this application with a condition. So I want to start off by giving some history on on this situation. Initially, both parcels that we're looking at, and actually, before I dive in too far, I want to just draw attention on this context map. We see these two, these two blue parcels highlighted. So that's what I'm referring to with this history. Originally, both of these parcels were a single property. They together were Lot 76 of the Stephenson Heights subdivision, which was recorded in 1954. In 2014, the lot was split into two parcels via a county deed, a quitclaim deed. But this was never reviewed through a city process. This was done without city review or approval. It was just done through the county. If we jump now to the application before the commission tonight, the applicant is now formalizing the existing lot split that was done via that deed. And they are attempting to formalize this through the subdivision amendment process. The proposed amendment does not alter the existing property lines. It just attempts to to formalize the process kind of retroactively and and do that through the subdivision process, which is the preferred process for splitting a lot in a subdivision upfront. Now, let's compare this application to the development standards in our code. And this project has gone through staff review by the the relevant city departments, but looking specifically at zoning standards. Both lots in this proposed amendment meet the 8,000 square foot minimum for the zone. Both lots meet the 70-foot lot width minimum. Lot 76A, which I have a visual for her in the next slide, but this is the lot that has an existing home on it. This lot meets the 50% maximum lot coverage standard. Lot 76B, which does not have a home on it, will need to meet the same lot coverage standard if it's ever built on. Will serve letters from water and sewer providers will be required prior to approval of the final plat to confirm utility availability. Looking a little bit more focused on setbacks and looking lot by lot, let's let's dive in first to Lot 76A, which is the lot on the left in this image on the screen. And you'll see an existing home footprint there. This home was built in 1954 and does not comply with the corner side setback. So where you see a red line measured at about 12.7 feet, the the current standard for that corner side setback would be 20 feet. So this is non-conforming to current standards, but was built prior to the city incorporating. The this lot also contains a non-conforming accessory structure, which again predates the city's incorporation. Proposed subdivision amendment that's before you doesn't increase the degree of either of these non-conformities. Looking at Lot 76B, this is the lot without a main structure. Future structures will need to meet setback requirements of our current standards in full. That will be verified during the building permit process if if an individual comes in to build there. Those current setbacks are properly represented on the preliminary plat. This lot does have an existing shed that will need to be removed prior to approval of the final plat as lots cannot contain accessory structures without main structures. Staff received one public comment on this application, which was provided to the Planning Commission in advance of this meeting. The public comment pertained mainly to concerns over the relationship with this application and CCNRs for the existing Stephenson Heights subdivision. CCNRs are are private civil agreements that the city does not address or enforce. But that was the the bulk of the comment received there. And this project is on the agenda for a public hearing tonight. And this brings us to our staff recommendation. And staff finds this application to be code compliant with city standards as outlined in the item staff report and recommends approval of the project with the condition that all subdivision requirements be met in full and all departmental comments be addressed prior to final plat approval. There are any questions from the commission? I'm happy to go back, clarify as as needed.
Sam, is there an existing curb cut? There there's a driveway, it looks like, on 76B?
Yes, there is a drive approach there. And as part of the building permit process, we would coordinate to to ensure that the proper protocol is followed there, either if they propose a new drive approach, that it meets current standards or or ensuring that they're not expanding the non-conformity of that. But there is, there is a curb cut there on that unbuilt lot.
Thanks. Any other questions, commissioners, for Sam, before we invite the applicant?
Sam, just as I look at the the Google Maps and just I'm just trying to guess about where the where the property line exists. I mean, it looks like the grass goes right up to where that that little drive that Commissioner Coates was describing. But it looks like it just flows like it's a, I mean, it's like a contiguous backyard right now. Is that? I mean, is it, can you ballpark even where the where the property line is?
I believe that, are you talking about the line between the two lots?
Yeah.
Reference. So you'll see it here on the preliminary plat between the side setbacks marked 20 and 8. I believe that there is a chain link fence between the two properties that corresponds, you know, with that with that line. When I was out there posting the notice, I believe I I saw that.
So that would mean that the that the little driveway is on the the current existing home property. Is that, are we understanding that correctly? Or do we think that?
I don't believe so. I I believe through my review that it's it's on the unbuilt lot. Again, during final plat approval process, and staff will verify that that those details are clarified and wrapped up. The Public Works and Engineering Department does does look at these and they they look closely at frontage and and right-of-way and drive approach items.
The the reason I point that out is that that there there's not a contiguous fence. You can see from the the Google Maps that it doesn't, there's not a fence that continues back on the property line. So depending on where the property line falls, we may have like a like curb and gutter issue coming all the way from the street in terms of egress and then remediation depending on where the property line goes as well. I'm not sure how that factors into what we're doing here, but at some point that will have to be addressed if that property line is the, if the if that driveway is on the existing lot, the the new lot, I think it won't be a problem, but it it looks really close to the to the other house. So and maybe at a certain point, we can ask a question to one or the other property owner.
There is kind of a an odd or unconventional curb and gutter style on these lots. And it looks like Mike may be pulling something up. I believe as part of the the requirements from the Public Works Department, they will be requiring frontage improvements on the unbuilt lot prior to building permit and and will probably look at that during that that time.
That that visual helps a ton, actually, because you can see that 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 they're gonna, they're gonna lose some of their backyard, which I I see why that concerns them, but.
Yeah, there there is a fence line here, though, that does look like it goes across most of the property.
Yeah, I I drive by this one a couple of times a day, back and forth to school. And and there is a fence. I don't know. It looks like it sits where the property boundary is, but you know, as Sam said, that has to all be confirmed. And the 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 section of Bengal, if any of you are familiar with it, the there's a, there's a pretty good drainage ditch on parts of it that are nasty as far as the driveways go. I this one looks like it might actually be not in a different spot from it, but let's unless you have any more questions for Sam at this moment, we can invite the applicant to to present. Okay, let's go ahead and do that.
Yeah, we have a a public comment. I is is Sam, is Tamara Ellsbury the applicant on this?
Yeah, Tamara represents the applicant. And if the commission's ready to hear from her, I I think she's the waiting room.
I've added her.
Great.
Okay, I'm I'm here now.
Welcome, Tamara. If you'd go ahead and present your application to us, we'd love to hear to hear it.
Oh, yes, it's it's as we've submitted, because we, my my dad's split the back half of that lot off back in 2014 to separate it. And so we are in the process of selling that lot to a builder who wants to build a home on it. But this this has all kind of been coinciding with our working with Cottonwood Heights on getting that lot approved to be built on. And that white, there is a white fence there on the property line, which we had built probably three months ago. So that's been built. And I think our surveyor has verified that those property, those property lines are correct. But and and you're correct, there is a driveway on the second lot. The lot that's 2875 Bengal Boulevard.
And that's Lot 76B, just for the commission.
Yes, 76B. So other than that, we're just trying to get that lot so it's approved, so it can be built on.
Thank you, Tamara. We appreciate you being here. We, thanks for taking the time to to present to us. And what we'll do is go ahead and if you would just remain available, we'll open our just our the public comment period, which you do not need to respond to. But if any of the commissioners have any questions for you after we close the public comment period, if you'd be available, that would be very helpful.
Yes, I will.
Okay, and then at this time, we'll go ahead and open public comment.
Okay, we have Benjamin Reese. He should be added now.
Benjamin, go ahead when you're ready. And just a reminder, you have three minutes, which is our standard. And just a reminder, you have three minutes, which is our standard public comment period time. Can you hear us?
Yes, can y'all hear me?
Oh, there you are. Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you all. Well, thanks for taking my comment. I was listening earlier to the working meeting and maybe there's some confusion around the nature of my current objection. So essentially, I'm opposing the mending of my lot on the grounds that I would not like to be removed from the Stephenson Heights subdivision and its existing recorded protections. So from what I was explained by. The owner. Who just spoke that and me had just, I I just got caught up with this issue with her. I believe the night before last night, I mean, I was made aware of this issue by just passing by on the street and seeing it on a run. Less than a week ago, but essentially that they were aware of the CCNR for Stephenson. And that's why they were attempting to have the lot changed to a different subdivision called the Roy T subdivision. And so. Essentially, it was not disclosed in the purchase. And the CCNR was provided to me in the title chain. So, you know, I knew that there were a dwelling was essentially not allowed to be developed. The the real estate attorney that I've since consulted with said that the property can't be carved out over my objection from the Stephenson Heights subdivision. And from its existing protections that apply to my property. So in summary, I'm asking that. I not be removed from Stephenson Heights subdivision and to be stripped of those existing protections that's been in place since nineteen fifty four. If that's not what is happening today, then the owner of seventy six B and myself maybe were perhaps unclear on what the subdivision amendment is doing. And I want to apologize for making my case to the wrong parties. And so essentially, as long as I'm covered by the CCNR protections, I'll pursue enforcement and other avenues. However, and finally, with that withstanding, I do ask that is notated as a condition that the amendment amendment must be expressly subject to the restrictions of the CCNR and expressly. Or expressly subject to any preexisting agreements that the property is bound by. Essentially, I'm just trying to get ahead of any developer who wants to build on this property. Like, I'm going to be, you know, addressing that in other avenues. And I'm I'm just using this meeting as a way to voice my opinion and or my comment in public and my objection in public. Because I will be pursuing other avenues of enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any but anyone else here for public comment, Mike?
We do, we have Tim Ford.
Tim, go ahead when you're ready. And it's, as I said before, we get, we each get three minutes during our public comment period. We're ready when you are.
Thank you. I live next door. And when I bought the house twenty one years ago, I didn't think I would have to have like a high density situation. I did the math, it's been sixty seven years, that's been a backyard. And now, instead of having a view of the Cotwood Canyon, so I'm gonna have a view of a house looking in my backyard. So I agree totally with the the first comment. If he needs help, like he knows where to find me because. I I don't want my property value, I don't want an uncommon law. I really, I really like say, don't want the house in my neighbor's backyard. So. I'll put it all to you. If it's a free for all, can I build a house in your backyard in Cotwood Heights? I mean, if that sounds good to anybody, let me know. That's, I'll keep it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any other raised hands yet.
Okay, we'll leave it open for just another minute in case there's anyone else. Well, why don't we go ahead with our discussion? I know because we're in this Zoom format, I hate to cut people off, but why don't we leave the public comment open? If anyone raises their hand, we'll come back to it again after our discussion, if that sounds okay. Commissioners, discussion questions? I I am. Mr. Reese raises an interesting point, you know, is there a way? And I don't know. If any of us can answer this question. It's probably you, Shane, if anyone can. But is there a way for this property owner on seventy six B? To, you know, get where they want to get to while, you know, leaving seventy six A in the existing subdivision?
I. I had assumed that this was what we were talking about is amending the Stephenson, whatever the master subdivision is. That subdivision's plat to divide lot seventy six into two lots A and B. But we were not exercising those lots from the subdivision because I I tend to agree that that. That it's part of the subdivision. And. As far as the CCNRs, I believe that the CCNRs encumber the properties that it in the the CCNRs encumber. And I don't think that any subdivision process can affect the encumbrance of the CCNRs on the properties. In this case, both lots seventy six A and seventy six B.
So. Maybe, maybe it's just a wording thing, but it it does say, you know, in our judge, in our agenda item, that it's an amendment to the existing subdivision, which would make what you just said absolutely true. But I thought in our packet, I read that it's it's actually a subdivision with a name.
As part of the plat amendment process, the applicant is required. To to prepare a new subdivision plat that represents the the amendment that they are proposing. I don't know the legality of of if, you know, previous covenants, codes and restrictions of the original subdivision would still apply to those lots. But that's why you are seeing the name change to Roy T on those lots is our process mandates the applicant prepare a new plat. That that shows the amendment.
But this is not a new subdivision, it's just an amendment to the existing subdivision, isn't it?
That's correct.
Yeah. So I think that that if the planning commission were inclined to approve this, they would just want to. Clarify that what they're doing is not creating a a whole new subdivision, but simply. Giving this modification of lot seventy six. Into two lots, a a name, but it's still part of the Stephenson, whatever the name is subdivision. And that the subdivision is not intended to affect the. CCNRs that may or may not encumber these lots. Sounds like the first speaker, Mr. Reese, has a real estate lawyer. And so he can speak with with him about that. But my own view is that this isn't going to affect the CCNRs.
Shane, maybe, maybe I can ask a clarifying question as well. Really, the the event that that has compelled us to action was the fact that. An action was taken at the county level and that we're we're compelled to remedy it. And so I I hate to impose a change in the CCNRs for real estate that was purchased in good faith that, you know, he, maybe he was attracted to their CCNRs. But unfortunately, an event beyond all of our control took place and we've got to remedy it. So I'm, you know, I I don't, I don't see any, is is that accurate? That we're we're compelled to action because there's, this is not, it's not completed at this point.
Thank you, you do bring up a good point, Commissioner Mills. If I might add to that, it, there was a deed done in twenty fourteen, a quick claim deed to divide this property, which, from what I've seen in the CCNRs, was a violation of those. Those requirements within. So that's already been performed and we are. You know, considering this application to to formalize that process through the the city's process to to actually review what was done through the county somewhat improperly in twenty fourteen.
Anyone can go down and record a deed with Salt Lake County, and that is what happened here. But. And that is improper. But what has happened here is that. The people, the family that has. Accomplished or or attempted that subdivision by deed is now having to come back to the city where they should have started. And ask for the city's subdivision of of the property. So that's what we are doing. I go back to what I said in the work session, if this had come in in twenty fourteen. We would not have, the city would not have been bound by the CCNRs anymore than it is now. Those are private contractual rights among the lot owners. Whose properties are encumbered by the CCNRs and they need to work that out among themselves. By negotiation or lawsuit or whatever means they have. The seat, the city can't get involved in those private contractual relationships. All the city can do is focus on its zoning code and determine whether and its subdivision code and determine whether this division. Is is proper in terms of lot size and and dimensions and and all of those things that that are part of our code. So I think that in twenty fourteen, if this had come in, then. The planning commission likely would have approved it because there are conforming lots that are a proper dimensions to to fit within our zoning ordinances. I do not think that this subdivision has any impact on the CCNRs. The CCNRs have apparently been recorded against this whole subdivision since nineteen fifty something. And this would not. In my mind, after thirty seven years of real practicing real property law, have any impact on the CCNRs. Mr. Mr. Reese apparently has gotten confirmation of that fact from his own own lawyer. So. Anyway, if there are other questions for me, I'd be happy to respond, but hopefully I've responded to the questions that have been asked thus far.
That was extremely helpful. Thank you.
I would like to see a copy of the actual application, but we have before it's now on the split screen is merely. A summary of what we would include if we were to approve this. And if they have asked that they, we created a new subdivision, that's certainly one thing. And quite different than what it is that changed is discussed for us.
So what this would look like, we've done this in in previous cases on the the title of the plat. It it may be able to be called the Roy T subdivision, but in the subtitle, it will say amending lot seventy six of the Stephenson Heights subdivision. That's all labeled there and and we can even just name it. Stephenson subdivision amendment and and avoid that confusion altogether. And that's something I think we can take care of at the commission's recommendation or or verify. As the final plat is prepared.
Think if you've got your packet. It's kind of buried in there, but it's page thirty nine. And I don't know if Sam, if you've got it or I can pull it up, but.
Is it?
The preliminary plat is is in there and it does look like it has that language that Mike was saying, where it says amending lot seventy six.
It does, I'm happy to pull it up, Commissioner Wild, if if that's helpful, just bear with me for one moment while I get there. And again, this is the preliminary plat and there there were some staff comments that will be changing on this based on our first staff review, but they were somewhat minor. I'm just waiting for my PDF to open. Andy, if you have it up and want to go for it, you might guess, but.
Sure, yeah, let me sure. So this is what was included with your packet. And then I can zoom in just because it's kind of hard to read on that red, but this is what it says right now.
Thanks for pulling that up, Andy.
Andy, can you zoom over to the right to the title block on the right there?
Let's see here, description. Oh, there, right.
Why does that say for use of the public, all parcels of land?
What do you mean, the the dedication?
Yeah, yes.
Standard, it's standard language in a in a subdivision, the the owner has to dedicate for use of the public, any portions of the property that are. That are that are that are intended for use of the public. This would, this would typically mean. Right of way widening, you know, sidewalks, what, things like that. So an owner's dedication is a is a standard part of a subdivision plat.
Thank you, that just caught me for a second there.
No problem.
I have to say, I I do like Mike's suggestion that we. Ask that we strike the subdivision name because it clearly, at least it seems to me that it's pretty clear this is an amendment to the existing subdivision, which would maintain. All of the things that go along with that subdivision that the property owner is is wanting to be sure they have, which is seems fair. But that we don't rename it because that becomes confusing.
Sure, that that makes sense. Do you want us to switch back to the presentation? Or are there other items on the preliminary plat that you'd like to to review?
I think while we're on this. I don't claim to be a surveyor or anything, but the the math is really tight on the eight thousand square feet. The county assessor's website says it's point one eight acres, which is is less than.
Yeah.
So if it's like point one eight five acres, then it's over. But but even I I've, since I'm not. Often involved in the. Technical lawyer terms, I was doing just some, I I. I think it might be good to verify that it is in fact over eight thousand, even based on the the eighty point six and one hundred point zero six. Definitions that they have in the boundary description.
Yeah, the recorder's website does does show that, and that was an early point of confusion in pre-application meetings. We believe it's due to a rounding decision, the way that the the website is rounded. Up on that. And we typically verify that with a survey, which we do have here in front of us. I I don't know if, Mike, you've you've seen it verified a different way that the commission could consider requiring, but.
No, other than part of the final review, the city engineer will go and actually map out the the boundary description to make sure the description closes and verify that it's accurate. And we will verify that there are actually eight thousand square feet because that's one of the few requirements we have of new lots in R one eight.
Right. Okay, thanks.
If we find that the the lot is nonconforming at that point, what is, what's the, what's the pathway?
They, well, they would need to either amend their preliminary plat to make it conforming. Which, if if it's a substantial amendment, could come back through planning commission. Or, I mean, if if there's not enough land there, then then there wouldn't be enough land and they couldn't split it.
Okay.
I I should say they couldn't validate the split that's already happened. If if it's substandard and that was done in twenty fourteen, we would have to explore that. I I don't want to contemplate that until, you know, the point where we verify that that would actually be an issue. But. At a minimum, they would have to amend their their preliminary plat, which could come back to you. Eight thousand sixty seven point three is eighteen five. Point one eight five of an acre.
Yeah, and I think Mike's made it pretty clear that that, you know, it's it's a condition, it it wouldn't be code. And so it wouldn't be able to be approved. And so it wouldn't be able to be approved if it's not so. Having having the city verify is seems very wise. Because it is tight.
Shane, can I ask, are you comfortable with the with the name, the title change?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, was that directed at me? I didn't quite hear the question.
Yeah, that's okay with the with the the name change for the title.
Yeah, I don't, I don't. Think that the name change is is imperative if that makes the commission more more comfortable, why that's fine. What I. Have understood from. Sam's comments is that one of the requirements in our code for preliminary plat is to. Give a name to the to the subdivision, and so I I I assume that's why that's been, that's this has been done. I think that the I think that the amending lot seventy six Stephenson Heights. For me, covers this because it's clear that it's still part of Stephenson Heights, still. You know, lot seventy six and Stephenson Heights, we're just, we're just changing that law, but I don't think that is. Excising it from the subdivision in any way, shape or form.
Having read the application, I'm satisfied that the language is adequate.
As far as the, as far as the size, yeah, that's that's. Hundred and twenty square feet. So I assume that. The applicant surveyor has done its job. I think that our surveyor will do. Or our our engineer will do his job, but will be based on lot dimensions and things, things like that and and. Presumably, it will take into account the arc on the on the lot on the. On the left hand side and he'll be able to clearly determine whether there's enough square footage. There or not to create two conforming lots. I agree with Mike that if it isn't, why then? Then it's not going to go through.
So so I have a question on this one because, again, in comparing the original subdivision. The one oh one point four seven and one oh or one hundred point oh six don't add up to and and so I, you know, based just based on. The hundred and one and the. I'm sorry, the difference there, it definitely would push one of these under eight thousand. So what would happen at that point? I'm curious because. Again, we've got two owners, like I I'm curious the process because it feels like. If it is just that we have to kick it to surveying and then somebody decides what what to do if we don't conform with that. Does this come back to us directly or does this go to some other legal dispute? Given the twenty fourteen.
To to me, the situation gets very complicated then because. Presumably, the owner, the applicant has sold off. Lot seventy six A, what we're calling lot seventy six A to Mr. Reese. And that is a particular legal description that contains a particular amount of square footage. And so if if. Those lots are nonconforming, then the subdivision cannot. Cannot go through. There is not going to be, in my mind, any sort of variance that can be that can be granted in this situation, so the subdivision can't. Can't proceed if there isn't enough enough ground. That's that's my way of looking at things now. I I guess I would say, and staff is probably not going to like me for this, and the applicant won't either, but if if there are. You know, questions that are that are fundamental here. Why? This can always be continued until the next meeting and investigations can occur to. See if fundamental requirements have occurred, have been met. I I think that Sam has done her her job and. And presumably, we're we're in good shape, but I I don't think the commission needs to feel like there's a. Foot in your back if if you have unresolved questions that you think are fundamental here that you need some more time to look at.
No hard feelings from staff for for reminding the commission of of that option. And we have verified through the the means that we typically do for these applications that the size is compliant and. As Mike mentioned, we, as part of the final plot process, will coordinate with our engineer to to verify that further, but. Certainly options as the commission sees fit.
I have a motion. My motion is to send this back to staff. To be reviewed by a surveyor and by the city engineer to confirm that it in fact does meet. The proper amount of real estate requirements from the ordinance.
Would that be a motion for continuance until the next meeting or or until a date certain?
Yeah, that was my next question, Shane, is is what amount of time would would be reasonable to the city to accomplish that?
To me, a month should be adequate, but I'll let staff speak to that.
Our next meeting is the twenty first. I. I think, I mean, our city engineer can review this between now and the twenty first weekend.
Can I make one quick comment?
I was going to mention too, he has reviewed it once, it has gone through engineering as part of the preliminary plat review. We can, we can certainly, you know, go through it again, but I just wanted to clarify that that our engineering department has seen this.
And you're going to be adequate or do we need a surveyor involved as well?
I think that's what we're asking, yeah, is to to confirm. The size of the lot.
I mean, having an extra surveyor involved is a little bit abnormal. Usually, we we have an applicant surveyor and they. Put their stamp on their survey to confirm that it's accurate, and then the city engineer verifies the work of that third party surveyor.
And I I would agree with that approach. We we will just, we we have our own engineer who can. Do geometry and math with the best of them, so there you go.
Do you mind if I just jump in real quick? I think one point that might help clarify this, some of the confusion. Is that there's this seven foot section, and if you look on the parcel map, the original full parcel. Followed this, I think probably this green line. And then at some point, they acquired seven feet of property from the LDS church, and you'll notice that in the description. It says it includes this seven feet from. The church property. And so some of these measurements, like this one shows ninety three oh six. If you add the seven, I I think it's really one hundred point oh six by eighty point six. And then the same thing with this, how you were saying that. One oh one point four seven and the one hundred point oh six don't add up to this. I'm I'm assuming, and I'm no expert, but I think that was probably the original length of the full lot that was about seven feet.
Yeah, thanks, Andy. That seven foot makes all the difference.
And I I think that's why it couldn't have been subdivided before, but they acquired a little extra.
It did. That was, that was included in the quitclaim deed from twenty fourteen was that seven feet from the the LDS church.
I would say that that does resolve my concern because I I did miss that detail, and so that's helpful to understand. I I think the. The one ninety four point five three, there, I guess I just can't see that extent line, so. I think that removes my concern.
It's quite the colorful preliminary plat.
We do have a motion before us, which does allow a little more time to confirm all of those things. And take a, take a second look and make sure that it's clear before we move forward, and that would continue is, you know, continue this item. Until April twenty first, which is two weeks from today. If. The city staff feels like that's adequate time. To resolve that, it seems wise to me to to keep the motion that we have before us and continue the item and just be very, very clear. Because already this is something that we're trying to correct from twenty fourteen, so let's get it right, is my opinion on that. And just take another couple of weeks and make sure that we do and understand all the parameters. So there's the motion. If we. If any, any discussion to that motion.
I'll second the motion to this time certain to the April twenty first meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue and a second.
And I guess I would just jump in and say that will give another couple of weeks for Mr. Reese to. Check check with his lawyer to make sure he's comfortable with the the fact that this is just a sub. This is just an amendment to the existing Stephenson Heights subdivision, and the CCNRs will continue. Encumber both of the both of the lot seventy six portions. Now, with.
Want to double check, Mike, do you feel that continuing to the twenty first leaves adequate time for our engineering department? I I want to be mindful of their review period, and I think typically they may do more of a twenty one day.
Yeah, but we're we're not asking for the full, you know, review of stormwater and grading and all of that. We're just verifying the lot, the basic lot dimensions, so I. I I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Sam, for clarifying. You know, that is also, there there are, can you bring up the the motions? Do you have access to that? Because there were also conditions that the city had recommended, which included. Verification of utility service to the to the lot.
Yeah, as part of the, some of the comments in our preliminary plat review, we're obtaining well-serve letters from the water and sewer departments for this lot. And this condition gets at that with the all-departmental comments be addressed.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be clear that we have all of these on the table. So the continue motion is still on the table with a second.
Call the question.
Question, go ahead.
Take all the question.
All the questions are ready for a vote.
Okay. Let's go. Oh, go ahead.
One second, sorry. The public hearing is still open. We can leave it open. We should probably define what happens with that.
Yes, thank you, Mike. We did leave that open. Let's go ahead and close the public comment at this point. That is just for this meeting, by the way, so any of you who are vested in this may still send in public comments, you know, show up on our agenda again on April twenty first. To the city and those will be sent on to the planning commission and can be shared in the meeting on the twenty first. Thank you, Mike. Okay, back to our votes. Commissioner Wild.
Yes.
Commissioner Mills.
Yes.
I think I missed somebody there, no.
Oh, let me stop sharing the screen. I'm so sorry. This will help.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Oh, I just lost my 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 pictures just moved around on me. Sorry, guys. Commissioner Rhodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Chapel.
Yes.
Commissioner Coots votes yes, and I think that's everyone, so we will continue this item to our April twenty first. Twenty twenty one Planning Commission meeting and ask for the clarification from city engineering on the lot sizes. Okay, our next item is three point three. This is project GPA dash twenty dash zeros or one. This is a public hearing to receive comment and take possible action on a city-initiated proposal. To adopt a park's trails and open space master plan as an addendum to the Cotton Hood Heights general plan. And for those of you that have been participating with us for the last several months, this has. Been on our agenda. It's it's, the city's really trying to get this plan out there and have you see what what the Parks Trials and Open Space Committee has been working on and. The future planning for that and and get your comments. That's why it's on our agenda so that it's. Open for discussion and comments and feedback. So with that, turn it over to you, Mr. Holka, and present the updates.
Sorry, I was on mute there. Thank you very much for that. We went over the updates during the work session, but for the benefit of those who may be just tuning in or joining us. Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan is an addendum to the general plan. This is a long-range plan that's intended to guide policy in the city. It is not a specific approval for a specific park or trail or open space preservation project. But it is intended to be a guiding policy document to assist the city council and city staff as we move forward. As you mentioned, we've been over this for several months and then actually for multiple years with staff and. Parks Trails and Open Space Committee had a number of open houses and. I I won't go through all of it, but just the brief summary is that it recommends. Inventories, the existing parks and open space in the city makes recommendations for where. New open space amenities or parks could. Be located in the city, makes recommendations for new natural and urban trails connecting throughout the city. And makes recommendations for preserving our foothills on the east side. With that, the main updates since the last meeting were that. A urban trail has been added to the layer for future. Trails along Highland Drive. And then we've added the Dover Hills. What the commission lovingly calls the burnt church property, so that's been added. The rest, I think, is all the same as what we've discussed in previous months. So I'll leave it at that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. What we are looking for today is to. Continue with the public hearing and then if the commission is satisfied with the comments. We would look for a recommendation to the city council. So a motion would be to forward. Either a positive or negative recommendation to the city council. And I think that. If you have additional comments, you can certainly. Include those and we could continue this or pass it along with changes. Whatever you feel is appropriate.
Thanks, Andy. I I ask one question back to you, as you know, this is a question I always have, and we have these. Kind of broad planning efforts going on is is, you know, we don't want to hold it up. If it's here to, because it receives more. Public input and exposure, that's great. We're happy to keep it and continue to to add our comments to it, but if. It, you know, probably gets more engagement at the city council level. From from the majority of our residents. I don't know if that's true or not. I I I guess I'm looking for your opinion if if you, I mean, I I think it's taken such huge leaps, even just in the last, since we've seen it a month ago. That I feel really comfortable putting it, putting it to the city council and allowing that public process to continue in that venue unless. You feel like it's better served here at the planning commission.
No, we we. Put it on the agenda for action tonight, so if you feel comfortable with that, then that's. We also agree, we think it's ready to move forward if it looks good.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with Andy that this has gone on for a number of months. And while it is getting better. I anticipate that even once it gets approved by the city council, it's going to get better after that. So it seemed to me that we ought to recommend it to the city council as a work in progress. And presume that this is one point oh and that. In six months, we'll have one point three or one point four. And submit it for the excellent piece of work that it is.
Commissioner Coots, I appreciate the the leadership to know when to kind of say, it may be time to get more eyeballs on it, so. I I'm I'm really pleased with the work product that staff and this this group has has provided and. I get really excited about this. I think that the the more people that see this and enthusiastic about it, I think that's, we'll start to see more progress.
Yeah, agreed. And do we have anyone here who we we can open the public comment period? We have that on here for. To receive comments. Do we have anyone who wants to comment on this, Mike, that you're aware?
Not currently. There's, we have four attendees. We can give it a couple of seconds here.
Okay, we'll go ahead and leave the public comment open, but. It seems like we're pretty unanimous in our in our opinion of of the planning commissioners that this is really, it's great. We've loved seeing it, seeing it evolve. And having a chance to comment on it here in this process and feel really comfortable moving it forward.
Yeah, I no hands raised here.
Okay. While while we can go ahead and close the public comment period, if you do see someone raise their hand, I I we could reopen it, I suppose. I hate to cut someone off if that's what they want to talk about. So. We I we could entertain a motion unless there's any further discussion.
Don't move.
So moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Heather, hopefully you're getting who's doing this. That was Commissioner Wild and Commissioner Rhodes.
I got it. Thank you, though.
Okay, sorry, I don't always stop to make sure you have it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and take a vote. Start with, I guess we'll start at the bottom. Commissioner Allen?
I enthusiastically, yes.
Commissioner Chapel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mills?
Yes.
But you guys, these names keep moving around on me. Okay, I hope I watch Commissioner Rhodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Wild?
Yes.
Commissioner Coots, yes. Commissioner Anderson, I missed you.
It's okay, yes.
Okay, I think I got everybody. Did I miss anyone else? Okay, I can't go looking at the list because the list changes when people talk. A very, as Commissioner Allen stated, enthusiastic, yes, from the planning commission. It's been a pleasure to be part of the process as the planning commission, and we really look forward to seeing it go through the city council. Personally, I look forward to us all getting vaccinated and going, having like a public open house like we, you, the city does so well with some of these planning efforts. Hopefully someday soon, we'll be able to do that. So enthusiastically moved on. Thank you. We do have two consent items. Well, I see one here. We did get two sets of minutes in our packet. But on our, on our agenda, we just have March 3rd. Or was I just looking at both business and work session? I thought I had a January set of.
I think the January were included as part of the, the bed and breakfast item, just as part of that staff report. So.
Okay.
Already been approved. So yeah, just the March is what we're looking for.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So we have our minutes from the March 3rd, 2021 first planning commission meetings. You've had a chance to review those if anyone has and feels comfortable making a motion to approve.
I'll make, I think it's February 3rd, isn't it?
Says March on the agenda, but I did read through them and I can't remember what the date was.
I have a correction. The last one was the day that the power went out. So we couldn't use zoom and I called in and got the, the work meeting better, tried to get back in for the business meeting and couldn't get it. So I was listed as excused, but I guess I could say I was halfway present.
Okay, I bet they can find a way to amend that.
And my motion to March 3rd, I now see as I'm going through the.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with the change also by Commissioner Wild, any other changes? Okay, so a motion to approve with that change, all in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have approved our minutes from the March 3rd, 2021 with the one amendment. And our next meeting is scheduled for April 21st, 2021. So we'll see you in a couple of weeks and we do need one final motion.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, Bob?
Yes.
Oh, I moved it. We adjourned.
How about you, how about you say, okay, there you go. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you, everyone. See you again in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, staff. Great job.
Agreed.
Yes, thanks, Al. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.